Hello?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I can hear you, okay.
Yeah, I had to go to my phone. Now, where's the rest of it?
Okay, now you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Pardon me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I like the picture better than I like what I'm looking like.
I didn't know we had those kind of options.
I didn't either, I'm surprised that it's there.
Is that my stuff, Brittany?
Okay. But I guess I'll just have to... I'm like tired, oh my goodness. Am I sharing my screen again?
If you want to.
Are you watching the, um, the waiting room?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think, oh, I do have an option to share my screen, great.
Hey, okay, are we on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you have a quorum, Ian left, he was here earlier.
Ian is still there from what I see.
Oh, okay, oh, I have to scroll down, I see, I don't see the whole thing all at once.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone?
Hi, everybody.
How's it going?
Hi.
Trying to find my glasses so I can see you.
Too much glare, jeez.
Point it away from the light.
Is that better?
Hmm.
That was better.
That.
That's good, Ian. You look good, Ian.
Hey, thanks, I appreciate it. What was that?
I tried to find your photo to put behind, you know, so we have our...
Oh, I, I got one for you, you want it?
Send it to me.
Oh, man, I got it, it's all up in the corner.
Okay.
You know that's front and back, right? Put it back, turn it on, um...
There you go.
One second.
Hello, Suzie?
Hi, how are ya?
I'm good, I'm good, your family doing well?
Yeah, we're doing all right, and it's, uh, we, outdoor recess is a big hit these days, so...
Yes.
Oh, that's fun.
Heck yeah, we went on a six-mile ride the other day.
Wow.
I'm pretty shocked.
Wow. I haven't been out much.
Ah, it's bea-, it's too nice to stay inside.
Ah.
Zoom. Online as the telephone number, the 248-552-1270.
That, that's me, I don't know why it, it, it thinks I'm, I'm dialed in separately and from the computer, but I'm, I'm listed up there twice for some reason.
Oh, um...
Are you on the computer and on the phone?
Yeah, but the audio is through the phone, not through the computer, but it, it thinks that it's going through the computer, except I'm dialed in separately as well.
Okay.
Sorry about that, it looks like we do have, um, a quorum, so I hear myself, somebody has to mute their phone.
I bet it's me, hold on a moment.
I'm still trying to share my phone, I mean, share my, um, my screen, and for some reason it's not working. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, we just got the deal with the echo that I'm hearing, so, can anybody else hear it?
Yes, I can hear your echo, but I will mute, maybe we should start muting, I don't know.
Okay, so, starting, um, with, uh, discussion item A, the budget study session is special meeting on May 4th. Cheryl, do you want to, um, talk to that?
Yeah, well, the, the budget, budget study session is basically the conversation for today, but I wanted to also draw your attention to the regular study session that's scheduled for May 4th, if we can make that a special meeting. So I just wanted to make certain that everyone was aware that would be a special meeting so that we can take into consideration the capital improvement plan, um, items that the planning commission will be moving forward, as well as any changes that council may wish to discuss at that meeting.
Okay, that's a regular, that was one of our regular scheduled, scheduled meetings anyway, so it shouldn't be, yeah, okay, yes, first Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and then next up, fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget.
Well, this has been an experience, um, trying to get this together while we were going through, um, stay home, stay safe, and all other types of procedures, so it's been kind of unprecedented, and, um, we didn't devote as much time and conversation to it overall as I would have liked to. So we'll need to make a round back to some of the department heads in particulars to fine tune, um, some of the details in terms of expenses, as well as doing the revenue projection, so I just wanted to bring to your attention, this is not nearly a final recommendation, but it's definitely a work in progress. And what you have before you indicates, um, overall, at the present time, um, projected general fund expenditures of 4.5 million.
Cheryl, do the, um, you know, obviously we don't have the, uh, revenue projections in front of us as well, but is, is your thinking right now is, is that the, the revenue, you know, obviously the revenue has to equal the expenses, are you thinking that we're somewhat close, or you, you have no idea, or, you know, where are we from the, you know, on the scale there?
It's difficult to say, if everything's status quo, we're close, um, but nothing is status quo, um, one of the major concerns is what is the state going to do relative to any revenue sharing, or dollars relative to, um, funding for, for roads. I know some, um, special appropriations have already been held back, so, so it's a little bit up in the air in terms of whatever, what are realistic revenue projections.
Okay, just wanted to know if you had any sense, that helps.
Hey Cheryl, I just happened to notice that they, um, and this is probably for the police chief, that they're looking to go to 12-hour days, is that true? I know they said that they were, um, testing out going to 12-hour days?
Yes, we are in discussions to move that forward, they would like to have it included in their contract negotiations, the contract expires the end of the year. So what we, um, had, we're, we're working towards is a trial period, starting probably after the summer, for about three months, to make certain that it works for us, that it makes fiscal sense, and if that seems to make sense, we'll include it in the contract.
Okay, and it would be across the board for all of the officers, for the most part, okay. I'm glad you're doing a trial run, but, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the, um, assistant for Cheryl, have we discussed that, or do we plan on discussing that?
One thing that, um, what we're gonna, what we can do is, can we, um, go through the discussion items, I mean, unless you're saying this is part of the, uh, fiscal year 2019, 2020, budget of what's up there now, um, would that be true, Ian?
Yeah.
Well, if we go page by page, we'll hit most of those talking points.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what I was, I was kind of alluding to, so...
Okay.
Just ask questions as we hit the individual pages, that's all right, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Alright, thanks.
Bruce, I missed what you just said, what did Bruce just say?
So when you have individual questions for the pages that we go over, then, um, jump in then, it's just to keep this where, you know, uh, we're flowing easy?
Yep, I understand that.
So if you're ready to start with, I'm looking at government services, looking at staffing, if you recall, last year, we had incorporated the recommendations from Michigan Municipal League, MML, they did the salary and staffing study, and, um, instituted some of those pay equity, um, recommendations, and, um, developed a, a, an actual great scale progression for the administrative staff, because that wasn't in place before, so that whatever increases they were getting, everyone knew what to expect, as well as it wasn't arbitrary, so, you know, you weren't playing favorites, or, um, penalizing people you didn't like, that there was actually a structure in place. What was anticipated when this was brought forward last year was, um, what we did was a 3% increase, 2% was based on performance evaluations, and 1% was essentially a cost of living, so no matter what, you got the 1%, the 2% was based on, um, passing your performance evaluation that's provided every year. What was projected for this year was a 4% increase, with the, um, with that being a 2% for performance base and 2% for cost of living, however, with uncertainties at the present time, I'm recommending that instead of a 4% increase, that it be 3% similar to last year. Once we get through with all of the revenues, I think we'll have a better idea if we can actually do a 4%, but I wanted to be more conservative until we get all of that into one conversation.
Um, I got a question about that, so regardless of the fact that everyone will be getting a 3% increase, and there will not be anything based on performance evaluation, or, um, yeah, evaluations from 2019?
Not quite, the three, no matter what percentage it is, if there's going to be a performance evaluation conducted, the only issue is, is it going to be reflected in 2% of their salary, or 1% of their salary increase?
Right, so what you're saying is they get a 1% cost of living adjustment, and then the other 2% is dependent upon their performance, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, makes sense.
Thanks.
Also in this budget is the carryover of the creation of the sergeant position, which would most likely be a promotional, and then opening up for filling for a full-time officer position. We were going to fill that this year, but in light of the 12-hour shift conversation, and we weren't certain what that impact was going to be financially, we held off on doing that until the next fiscal year, starting July 1st. So, any questions on that portion of the staffing?
Nope.
No.
And... Then the next section is the government services, that's pretty, uh, status quo, the one item that is highlighted in 7500 is vehicle expense, and that's primarily for the city administrator, um, vehicle reimbursement, and since we haven't had a conversation in regards to what, if any compensation or benefit changes we might enter into, I just highlighted it to make, make note that that's subject to a future conversation. So any questions on the general services section?
No, I don't have any.
That's good.
So, I do have a question real quick, is, um, the library contract, have we heard anything else, um, from the library? I know that they were trying to do an increase, but I know we're in a contract before we get all involved in someone saying we're under contract, but have you heard anything?
I haven't heard anything in, in regards to changes, I know they were doing their strategic planning process, but in terms of any financial impact, there's been conversations that they were, they would be interested in the assessment for the, on the taxes of later village residents being parallel to Southfield, but, um, we've indicated that is not what was approved, so I haven't heard any further conversation in that regard.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Hey Cheryl, I do have a question on, on one thing, on the auditing services, so, the actual fees they charged us was like $19,621, is that right? For this past year, and then, um, so our budgeted fees are projected is 27, so are we going back to just thinking what they're going to charge us, or is that a, is that an agreed-upon contract at this point?
It is agreed-upon contract, but that doesn't reflect all of the fees, because it's spread over some of the other funds. And Pam, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything further to that? Is she here?
Yeah, I'm here now.
Okay.
Well, that was an original from the...
Well, that was an original from the, um, oh, where somebody's moving the screen on me, Kelly.
All right, I forgot my screen, I'm so sorry.
I don't get my two desktops here, so.
It's okay, so sorry.
Here. It was a, it was supposed to be a 3% from the, um, $25,000, but we probably will not use that, but it all depends on if we have to have a, um, a federal audit. If we're over a certain amount of money, we have to have a federal audit, so I'm just being precautious on that. And plus with all the new Gatsby laws, which I've been told that they don't have to go into effect this year, so that's gonna help us, so that probably can come down now.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Hey Salim, just a quick question, did you bring that up because you felt that that price was too high?
No, no, I just, um, I just saw the, the actual of 19 versus the, I think the prior but no, I guess the budget was 19. I, I just saw the increase and I was just curious as to, as to what that was, if that's, uh, you know, if we have a signed engagement letter or whatever, but I don't know if it's, I don't think it's too high. I've talked to other firms and, you know, some firms might be a little bit lower, some might be a little bit higher, but I don't think it's that out of range. I think it's reasonable.
All right, thanks.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, we can move on to page six and that's the general fund administration. And some of the highlights there, the part-time code enforcement position is reflected in the budget and just to give you an update, we have completed the interview. We've completed the background, um, check on two of the candidates and I intend to extend an offer to one of the candidates. It didn't seem like the best time for someone to be starting since there's technically no one in the office, so, um, we'll try to figure out when that start date might look like and if they're going to accept the offer.
That's great news. What's, what's the background of the individual you're extending the hi- hire to?
He's already a part-time code enforcement, um, officer in another community, so he, he has a wealth of, um, training already.
Excellent, that's awesome.
That's great, that's nice.
And, uh, one thing to note is the $63,000 reduction of fringe benefits and Pam, again, could you describe what that reflects?
That reflects a decrease in the MERS for the administration side of it and I'm gonna check that once over again before it actually goes to fine.
And, and just to, I have one question on that Cheryl, so, so it, it dropped by 63,000 and there, there's a almost equal rise of 50, no, well, it's a little bit less, 54,000, um, for public safety for fringe benefits. Is that, is that due to MERS or is that, uh, is that union issues or, you know, why is it going down in one spot and up in the other?
It has a lot to do with the defined benefits of the MERS.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, say that again, you kinda broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry, it has the defined benefit of the MERS for the defined benefit people. It has changed a little bit in our, um, in our last evaluation we had.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Ferguson, going to your earlier question, this would be where the salaries for a part-time position would be reflected and the assistant to the city administrator is not there at the present time.
And the question behind that then is, is the, why aren't we including that in there?
We don't know when they'll start, right?
Well, and just being conservative, I want to see what the revenues are really going to be looking like. It doesn't make sense to try to create a position if we really can't afford it.
Right.
And if, and what, I don't wanna create a position that we don't have a sufficient funding to continue it, so I hate to start somebody and say, sorry, we're gonna have to lay you off.
Right, makes sense. Let's just make sure we, we keep thinking about that as we go forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, and...
Oh, I'm definitely thinking about it.
So it looks like the part-time, is that, does that normally go used for the summer or, because it, you haven't actually used any of that yet, as of yet, is that right? Am I reading that correctly?
Well, we have someone coming in a few hours a week. She started off helping with the elections and I've been using her, um, to help with some other projects, including the Your Town, um, newsletter. So we've been using a little bit of it.
Donna?
A lot of those hours may be reflected in the elections right now.
Okay, is that reflected on this, am I misreading this? The, whatever you've paid her should...
Well, she just started not too long ago, Donna. She started not too long ago and plus that part-time wages was for the, um, that line item actually was for the code enforcement officer that has not been heightened.
Okay.
His line, or his or her line item at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And to your point, the act, when you're looking at the actual column, that's as of the end of February, so any expenses after February aren't reflected there. And the, uh, we're having a couple of the elections this year, at least that's what I hear, and so that's reflected in the elections line item with an addition of 8,000. So any questions on that section?
Yeah, just two, two questions, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, earlier this year, uh, we talked about, um, internships for the city. Is that gonna be also included in this or are you just waiting to see how the, how the budget is gonna balance out before thinking about it?
I think that was, that discussion and internships was surrounded around, um, grant writing and I think, eh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't, we just conclude that we were going to try to find an assistant city administrator who will have grant writing capability? Am I remembering that correctly?
That was my understanding.
I believe you are.
There is a...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There, there are some plans for a summer internship if we have a summer activity program.
Yep.
Um, that involves, um, high school and college students, but that's somewhat separate from the conversation you're talking about in terms of a grant writer.
Okay, so the grant writer, okay, so just so I'm clear, that grant writer, you're, you've already got numbers for that, you, you're anticipating that and is that gonna be classified as part-time?
It would be a part-time position, yes.
Okay, and you, you have a general idea of what you may wanna offer that, but you wanna make sure you get to the end of where the budget is and, and make a decision, right?
Correct.
Okay, last question, so for, um, I'm looking down here, for the, um, the assistant to the city administrator, do you have a general idea of what you may wanna offer that, offer that person?
It's the same person.
It's gonna be the same person, okay. Man, that's gonna be an interesting shoe to fill there.
Okay.
I have a, uh, question, um, and I know, I think Yvette is online. I know that we're gonna have an, an increase for the additional elections, but just in case we're doing all, um, by mail elections, are we the ones that are going to be absorbing the cost for the, um, return envelopes and postage or is that gonna come from the Secretary of State? I can't remember.
I believe that it's gonna be at the city's expense. The last I read, they didn't say anything about, uh, the state reimbursing or, or anything like that, so. I'm really, stay tuned.
Right, so, I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting you, so basically the elections could possibly go up, um, based on what's going on now.
Yes, so if I have to send out absentee voter, absentee applications, ballots, and they're saying that I would have to include postage on all of the return envelopes for all of the AB ballots for everyone who votes, that's gonna be pretty expensive.
Yeah.
So we'll have to...
Now, my question with that to either you or Cheryl, would that be included under, um, under whatever it is that since we, we did a, a state of emergency, would that be something that could be covered or being reimbursed from the federal government?
Those rules are changing on an hourly basis, I would hope, either from the state or for the federal government, that those would be reimbursable.
Okay.
Um, we just have to track it and, um, definitely apply when those opportunities will make themselves available to us.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
If there aren't any more questions on this section, we can move to general fund building and ground. And the main change there is the $4,000 for parking lot maintenance and as a requirement from the state of Michigan for our MS4 permit, um, they are asking that we have the parking lots at City Hall and the DPS yard, um, swept on a regular basis. Uh, so we've contacted the city of Southfield and we can contract with them for those services and the estimated cost is about $4,000 for the year.
Cheryl, what's, I'm sorry, what's the MS4 permit?
Now, I forgot, it's four S's, it's a permit that we're not, where they're trying to discourage putting residue into the, the water stream.
Yep.
So one of those is to prevent the dust and dirt and accumulations from parking lots from going into the water stream. Do you remember what MS4 stands for?
Well, I guess I'm, I guess I'm still confused, the way, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, it's, so we've got an MS4 permit, why, why do we have the permit? What, what do we need it for, I guess, and what i- what is it? I guess I understand sweeping, I, I'm just still a little confused.
Okay.
My understanding is it's...
Go ahead.
So it's a state requirement through the department that's now called Eagle, used to be, um, environmental quality department. So as they are trying to have protections over the waterways, some of the things they want you to do is to minimize, as you recall, they don't like us, like us to fertilize too heavily because of the runoff. One of the other things that impacts, um, the water is making certain that, um, catch basins and every, other things of that nature that go into the waterways and wastewater are as clear as possible. Another component part of the permit and applies to everyone is how you're keeping the parking lots clear of the debris that can then go and be a runoff item.
Got it, so, so, so is this, is this something that like a- all businesses that have parking lots are required to get now or, or is this something just because we're a municipality?
I honestly don't know relative to businesses, I never heard of it, what the business is, definitely municipalities.
Okay.
Anybody that was previously... Anybody that previously was required to have an MPDES permit is gonna be required to have one of these MS4 permits now.
Thanks.
Any more questions on this section? Then we can go to page seven and that's general fund, public safety. Other than the changes I mentioned, which is really just a carryover in terms of the positions, there aren't many changes in their budget. Um, the part-time employees should go down, um, once, especially once the 12-hour is in effect and the, uh, the new positions are in place. What I haven't had a chance to have a conversation with the chief about is relative to if he thinks their training, um, expenses might go up. He also has a request in for tasers and until we have the capital improvement, um, program adopted, we won't know if that's included there or if we have to look at another, um, funding mechanism for the tasers. So any questions on the police department, public safety? Okay, then the next section is general fund, public services. Now this one might require a little bit more conversation. Um, in previous discussions, the councils indicated they wanted to initiate the sidewalk maintenance program and the way that it's been set up in the past is that the owners of the property are given the opportunity to have the sidewalks that are adjacent to their property repaired at their own expense or they can participate in a program offered by the city in which we go out for the RFP and then based on that contracted price, they, uh, essentially the city funds upfront the cost of those repairs and then the property owner is allowed to repay it over the course of about four years. Um, the last time I saw that in place was around 2006, which is the one I found the records for and for doing 11, 12, and 12 mile and Southfield Road, it was about $20,000. So as a placeholder, I put 20,000. I don't know what the costs are compared to then, I would imagine it's gone up and I, um, I don't have an exact count of how many flags are in need of repair at the present time or how many of the business owners would do it themselves and that may change significantly in light of today's economic conditions and the impact on businesses being closed.
Um, I, I understand it, I don't have any, I don't have any questions, I wanted to have some feedback.
Either.
Yeah.
Are, Cheryl, are we, have you been doing anything in terms of like, um, contract, you know, talking with contractors or anything, um?
We, we did obtain a, a price from the contract that we most often use here. I would probably still go with the RFP, so we have a estimated cost. I haven't multiplied that by the number of flags yet, um...
Right.
But most likely the costs have gone up since we received the quotas about two months ago.
Yep, okay, I just wanna make sure we're moving forward on it.
Yes. In regards to that, we definitely have to get the programming in place, including establishing what is the program, what is the spread that we're allowing, the, um, public hearing in regards to it, so it's, it's a lot of steps relative to establishing the program.
So is the re- the repayment of the spread over four years, is that just a replica of, um, what was happening, what happened in 2006? Um, just the repayment plan that could spread over four years? Why is it four years? Is it...
Now, I, Scott or Pam, do you recall if there's a, a statute requirement relative to how long the, the payment can be extended?
It, it depends if it's gonna be done as a special assessment district, then it can be extended out to a maximum of 10 years.
But that would mean that we would, we would be, it would hit our budget for that long, correct? Cause we're putting the money upfront.
Yes.
Okay. So we can choose that number, okay. Thank you.
And then the other item is, uh, I want to draw to your attention is the Lacer Services. If you recall, there was the increase last year of 4% which also reflected the addition of a staff person. This year I just spoke with them and they would like to have a 3% increase, um, just to pass it on to their staff, so, but it is not currently reflected in this budget. If you agree to that, that's just under $12,000.
You said they would like to have it?
They're asking for, yes, they ask for a cost of living increase.
We don't know what that's gonna look like.
Well, 3% is $11,877.
I mean, we don't know what our economy's gonna look like, should we still consider this?
We don't know anything right now.
Right.
We don't know any.
And they understand that, of course.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, cause I'm hearing you say like to have, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it'd probably make sense to wait and see what the revenue looks like, revenue projections, like...
Yeah, absolutely.
So part of my thinking was, especially the items where you see the highlighted note, is that we'll have a, essentially a sheet of items that we need to go back over, um, once we have additional details.
Okay.
And then you can add others if, as your thoughts come up as well. If there's no more questions on public services, we can move to page nine, which is recreation. Recreation probably more as much as any other department is def... Recreation probably more as much as any other department is definitely impacted by everything that's going on. The community room rentals obviously are not occurring. The programming is essentially not occurring. Chris is trying to be very creative in terms of what he's doing to make something happen, especially with remote access. So we're, things are very much up in the air with recreation, both in terms of revenues as well as the programming dollars. At the present time, we're looking at status quo. There's probably going to be some adjustments. Pam and I are going to sit down with him later this week and try to see what realistically can be fine tuned. So there might be some additional changes in regards to the recreation budget. And on the note that I included with your packet, there were a number of items that he was asking as part of the capital improvement plan. But I just wanted to bring your attention to that so that you know that if any of these are to go forward, they will need funding either through that mechanism or through the recreation budget.
It's a quick question. Were we serious? Sorry.
No.
Okay, just a quick question on the dog park pre-planning. So I see the number up there. Were we, I mean, do we have a, whoop, sorry, one second. Sorry about that. Had to turn my phone off. So for the, for the, the dog park pre-planning, you're just, is that an estimate? Or are you, are we planning on bringing this to council to discuss further to make this more of a reality?
Well, the process should be that it's included in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is part of the comprehensive plan process. So anticipating that there are going to be some steps relative to that, he's included it in the CIP.
Okay.
But regardless, whatever approach we take to it, it would have to come back to council.
Yep. Understood, thanks.
Any other questions on recreation?
Yeah, Golden Gate Park update, study and planning. What did that entail? I just see it as a bullet point.
Looking at what needs to be updated in terms of the amenities at the park and making those plans and engineer drawings if that's required for the layout and things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
If I recall, it was the replacement of the play equipment there.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
No more questions there. We can move on to local streets on page 11.
Uh, page 10, major streets? Just skip over that.
I did, I picked up two pages. Okay, major street. From last year and, well, the last two years. The first year we had the allocation for the purchase of the dump truck. And then last year was the allocation for outfitting the truck. So that was spread between the major and the local streets. So $40,000 was reflected in capital expenditures. There isn't a large purchase this year. So capital expenditures is reduced by that $40,000 in both the major and the local streets. So one thing we will need additional conversation in regards to is if there will be any major street fund transferred to the local street fund, which we typically do each year. But we also have to keep in mind that we need to start setting aside funding for the upcoming reconstruction of the 11 Mile Road project.
Yep.
Mm-huh. True.
Okay, any questions on major streets?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we can now move to page 11, local streets. Same thing in regards to the $40,000 reduction in the capital expenditures. And the road project for the upcoming year, fiscal year is $250,000 for the reconstruction of Santa Barbara. That's the section from San Jose to La Crosse. Originally, that was budgeted for $180,000, but it looks like the bid costs are coming in higher and based on what we've been experiencing, there's a bit more work entailed. So that's budgeted at $250,000. Any questions?
Nope.
No.
Okay. The next section is page 12, the water fund. You go, it's kind of a circle. So you figure out your expenses and you figure out your water rates. So we're figuring out the expenses and we'll come back with you with the estimate on recommendations for the water rate. The water purchase rates have not been reflected yet in this as well. And the capital improvement plan is the Santa Barbara Water Main, the continuation of that project from La Crosse to Roseland and then going across to Bloomfield and 12 Mile. And that's the start in July of this year.
I do have a question about this. Are they going to be coming back to fix the sides of the roads? Because I know over here, and I have a couple of pictures of them, there are some what look like sink holes and just the sides of the street look really, really, really bad. And which, well, I was going to say, but also like in front of my house on the corner, there is so much dirt and rocks, it's blocking the actual ditch for the water to flow through.
Okay, if you could share those pictures with me and I'll get in touch with the engineer to make certain that it's finished up to our standards and appropriately.
Okay, and I think that's what, I can't remember who came to the meeting before, but they were asking about when they were going to fix the street. Because there was a, there's a point on Santa Barbara where it seems to get narrower from this, from this repair, because it's like raggedy on the side where you can't get over too far. That makes sense.
Okay. All right, we'll definitely follow up on that. If you could send the pictures, that'd be helpful, too.
Okay, thanks.
Any other water fund questions? Then we can move to the sewer fund on page 13. I emailed to you, I think Friday, the information that we received in regards to the rumble relief drain project and the assessment for the city of Latha Village of this $100,000 project is $10,500. So we budgeted a little more than that, I believe, for that. So that's reflected in the sewer maintenance, sewer system maintenance slide item. And I think that was it for that one. Then the sewer system maintenance, there's $100,000 budgeted for the televising of 25 linear feet of sewers located north of I-696 and $20,000 for the redesign and modeling that's required under the Eagle Administrative Consent Order. The capital expenditure of $160,000 is for the Evergreen Farmington SDS for their Long Term Corrective Action Plan. That's an $80 million project. I mentioned to you, I think a few meetings ago, that this would be coming. So they have more finalized figures now. So they're looking at 3% share for Latha Village of the overall project. And that makes our payment 2.5 million. And the annual payment, which they're going to be bonding over 20 years, will be $160,000.
I'm sorry, what is the Evergreen Farmington sewer disposal?
That's where all our sewage goes.
Oh, okay.
Right, and what they're looking at essentially building another sanitary retention tank near 8 Mile Road.
Okay.
Who's looking to do that? The Water Resources Commission?
Correct.
Okay. 8 Mile and what, do you know?
Essentially where Sam Club is, where they already have some property.
Okay. Oh, I see. I know exactly where that is. Yep.
So, and that's happening this year, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And then as I mentioned previously, the capital improvement, the Planning Commission is planning on taking that up on April 21st. And that's why we definitely need to have a special meeting on May 4th, so you can consider that before your final adoption of the budget. So any other questions overall? I think we've covered discussion items A, B, C, and D.
Just an overall question regarding DEPW. Did we give them a percentage increase last year? Was it, was it?
Yes.
Was it cost of living? Was it cost of living? We gave them?
Yeah.
Yes, we gave them the 3% and the additional employee.
Okay. Are they looking to hire additional people this year? I thought we lost one or two people for the 2020 season.
Are we adding?
Additional person.
Did we, I thought we lost two and we added one.
No, Tim was out for a while, but he's back at work.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions relative to the budget?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So our next study session will be April 20th. And we'll discuss the revenues as well as setting the public hearing dates and any additional adjustments that council may want to make at that time. Okay, so.
So next up, we have the discussion item E.
Yes. So I mailed to you this weekend, which I can't use this one. I mailed to you this weekend, a reminder of the goal for the year as well as my self-assessment, the form for you to do my evaluation. And I came across the mission, vision, and value for the city of Latha Village that was developed, I think, 14, 16 years ago. So you have those for your consideration. And probably more than anything is identifying the timeframe. I put a suggested timeframe on the form, but you can determine if you want something different.
If I'm not mistaken, that was to have the council people have it back to me by, it was April 16th?
I believe so. I was trying to look it up. Yes, so April 13th, evaluation is completed by council members and submitted to the mayor, to be summarized, and then where we actually sit down and discuss it in person.
You said what date was?
27th of May.
Okay.
April 13th.
So that's a week from today.
Okay.
April 13th, and I'm sorry, I don't have all of, all the electronics. I don't have it all in front of me right now. But April 13th was when every, that you're going to send, I'll send it out to everyone? Or just, I'm sorry, repeat that again. What was April 13th?
I'll start from the beginning to make it a little easier. So the blanket evaluation forms were sent out and they were to be sent out by today. The self-evaluation by me was sent out. So the next step is the evaluation to be completed by the council members. And they are to submit that back to the mayor by April 13th.
What do I have written down for the 16th? Do we have something for the 16th or am I just making something up?
Maybe that's when you were planning on summarizing it, so that's your deadline.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
Because once they go back to you, you summarize.
That'll work, huh? Sounds perfect.
Okay, so everybody now has a blank evaluation. Correct?
If it was, if it was sent today, yes. I haven't checked.
Just nod and smile, Cheryl.
I think it was then Sunday.
Sunday? Okay, probably haven't. Let me check.
So if you could have, if you could have it back to me by the 13th?
13th, sure.
Well, now that everybody knows I'm not going to do it to the 16th, no later than the 16th.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Hey, that just made no sense. That was like my inside thoughts made out loud. So, yeah, so let's just switch it, forget the 13th, have it to me no later than the 16th, so we can have a discussion on the 20th for it.
Sounds good.
So you want me to include that evaluation discussion on the 16th agenda? I'm sorry, on the 20th agenda? Okay. All right.
When did you send that, Cheryl? Yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. What's the title on that? Because I'm scrolling through, I don't see it.
It was goals and city administrator evaluation. At 6:33 PM.
Okay, while you're looking that up, we're going to move on to it. If you don't have it, just let us know, somebody will send it to you.
Okay.
So discussion F is the miscellaneous budget items. What does that look like?
I think we've pretty much covered everything unless there's something that someone else wants to add. And I know that Pam and Scott and I are on the line.
I just thought about it. The council's not getting fed, so how do we come home?
We can give you a $5 gift card for the narrow.
Just kidding.
See, every, every, every pandemic has a positive side. We're saving money.
I'm sorry, I've never lived through a pandemic, so I don't know what that positive side is.
I was going to say the exact same thing. I'm not sure what pandemic Cheryl lived through, but I think this is my first.
What, the SARS pandemic you lived through, Cheryl?
She does sound experienced, doesn't she?
Yeah, she does. So does anyone have any additional budget items that you want to talk about? I know Suzie is being very patient. Do you have anything that you want to add?
Nope, I'm good. I'm totally good.
Sorry, I have one budget question regarding House in the Woods property. So I thought we, oh, here we go.
I'm muting myself. I'm going to go back to mute.
I know. I totally forgot about that piece of property, all the other things.
That little itty-bitty piece of property. So we did, we don't have any kind of assessment as far as what the value is. We've been estimating. We never went out for an RFP or a quote for that. We stalled it, basically.
That's not quite correct.
Okay.
We did get an RFP.
Okay.
It-
Yeah?
We're at a standstill at the present point.
Okay. What's the plan for the, well, maybe we should wait until after we get everybody back in the office. But I'm sure you've got a penciled-in plan to kind of bring it back to council and figure out what we're going to do with it.
Well, one of the things that we are going to have to do, or what I'd like to do as part of the comprehensive plan update, is prioritize, identify some priority sites throughout the community. It's one of the RRC requirements as well. And I think this is the perfect time to get some feedback. So that's on our, it's on our growing list of things to discuss on our, for our April 21st Planning Commission meeting. So we'll make a note to talk about House in the Woods and get some feedback on that.
Okay. Is there any lingering money that needs to be tied to any activity to it? Because I didn't see it anywhere in the budget where, okay, we need to do something and we may have to allot something to that. I mean, it's just kind of stalled. So what- So what's, what's the next step?
Lingering money. I don't know what you mean by lingering money.
Are you speaking about making, to clean the property up or to keep it, you know? So, okay.
Yeah. Cause it, it's bad.
I'm not sure about anything.
We did not include that. We didn't include that in the budget last year or this year.
No.
But I think that's gonna be a part of DPW's responsibility, isn't it? Of just keeping the grass cut?
Yeah, there's no grass over there. It's all growing in at this point.
Well, unless you feel like adding it to the parks and rec, cause it's the passive park now, but that's, you know.
Yeah, it's not a park.
Yeah, I'll just leave that one right there.
It's our one, so. So you understand where, where I wanna kind of take it? Because right now, we're stalled, all of us. We don't know what we're gonna do right now. So the first step would be at least come up with some kind of maintenance program to keep it clean, right? Something. And then.
At a minimum.
At a minimum. Then the DDA will step in and do their magic.
Well, it's not in the DDA district. So, you know, just saying. There's some other projects the DDA's can work on.
I know I'm asking a lot of questions, so just consider those, okay? Thanks.
So if, if I hear you correctly, you would like on our budget note page to include maintenance, some type of maintenance or clearance for the House in the Woods property.
Not crazy clearance, but some kind of maintenance. I mean, we gotta do something over there. It's, unless we're just gonna table it.
So I'll see if we can get some quotes in for that, because I have no idea what that might cost.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only maintenance that we should be doing is keeping, you know, the driveway clear. I, we shouldn't be maintaining the property. That should be on whoever buys the property.
There's no driveway.
Or that, or, or just the entrance way into the property. I, I don't really feel that we should be spending more money maintaining the property itself unless it affects the other properties around it.
Yeah. That makes sense, but it still has to, we still have to have some sort of maintenance, like you said.
Right.
At a very bare minimum of, of maintenance. And that is kind of like what I was saying, if there's grass over there, it's, I know over the triangle, there's grass around there, correct?
Butterfly bush, butterfly garden.
Right. That one. Um, and so to cut that, that would be DPW, but I don't, I agree with Bruce. I don't think that we should put a lot of money into it, especially if we're gonna consider, not consider, we're gonna sell it, because, you know, you all poo-pooed my other ideas,
Did we? I'm not sure.
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Specifically. So.
All right. But I hear you, Bruce. I'm not saying clear the property and make it look immaculate, but we, we gotta do something over there. What the minimum is. I don't know what that is, so. Thank you.
Yeah, we are gonna have to do something about that and start focusing back on that. We can put that on a later agenda view aside. Put an asterisk, put it in a thumb tack or whatever, Cheryl.
Got it.
Thank you. Um, so we beat that horse enough. Next, for mayor and council comments. I have a few. One regarding the playground issue, which we did put the police tape up around the playgrounds to prevent people from going on the playgrounds. And that tape was torn down, so we're not putting up any more tape. And basically, it is a misdemeanor of being on the playground, seeing that it is an executive order and that is a state ordinance opposed to a Lathir Village ordinance. And my understanding, Cheryl and the chief have already talked about it. I was trying to be a little softer about it, but, you know, it is what it is. We gotta protect people from themselves. So, I mean, the gentle approach, of course, is if you get caught once, to kind of give a warning of what the ticket involves and what could happen. And if it happens again, to go ahead and ticket it. That's just something I wanted to discuss with you all. The option is to warn and ticket, I mean, warn then ticket or just ticket, which I think we should be gentle in this environment and warn first.
If we can, and it depends on the severity of the offense. So in general, yes, we would give a warning, but if the circumstances weren't, then they would go straight to the ticketing. Everyone has rejected my idea of tasing as a deterrent, but I'm still open.
It doesn't sound gentle.
I think when we talk about tasing people, we all should try at first to see how that feels and then we'll go back and feel if that's the appropriate thing to do. How about that?
I go last. Watch out.
I don't think anybody should be tased, so they're.
Yeah.
Ian's tried that before, I did.
Yeah, I did. I did try that before. But I don't think we should give anybody any warning. It's common sense. We are in an emergency situation. Why, why are people just so ignorant that they can't understand that? I'm, you know, you gotta treat people like adults. You gotta treat adults like adults. I'm sorry. I gotta take the hard line because we, we are in the epicenter. We have got to get over that curve. That's how I'm thinking. Why would you take your kid out there to play, have them play on the, on the play, play scape? Doesn't make any sense.
What if your kid went there and you didn't know they went out there? You know, I'm saying maybe 12, I don't know what the age is anymore that they're allowed to be by themselves, but what is it, 12-year-olds? And they gather and, you know, Chief McKee, tell me if I'm wrong. So you have a bunch of 12 to 16-year-olds that gather. You go and you ticket who? You ticket the parent, if I'm not mistaken. And so.
One of the challenges is who, who does the prosecution? Because the, you know, it's a county, there's a county order, there's the state executive order. And so who's going to, who's going to prosecute in those situations?
Right. See, yeah.
The Oakland County brass gears office.
Yeah. I mean, it's taking, you know, resources just to do something that a parent should say, hey, Billy, you can't go out on the play scape. Sorry. I mean, it, it's all about education. People can't just plead ignorance. I mean, it's ridiculous. Anyway, I'm off my soapbox. That's my take on it.
Okay. So then let me ask you this. This, this is curious, because I saw this today. What do we do when we see a group of people that are together walking, just walking around?
Walking, like exercising?
No.
Oh, just.
Well, I mean, and, and joking aside, even if you, you see people, well, congregating together, which that is also an executive order not to, for social distancing, you know? And I do see a number of people that are walking together clustered.
Clusted with, with, like, within the six feet, the, the social distancing six feet or within that? Just walking together?
Right.
Do they live in the same household? I mean, that's, you know, that's probably a question we need to, we don't need to address it, but I'm not a police officer, so I can't.
Families, it should be fine, right?
Yeah. Yeah. If it's, if you live together, right.
No problem there.
Right.
I'm guessing the people I've seen don't live in the same household.
Right. Okay.
And they shouldn't be down the.
Be reported to your local police officers.
Yeah. We're going down a slippery slope here. I mean, you know, we, we just gotta act like adults. I mean, if we have a cityscape that's closed, then some, someone is ripping off the police tape.
I'm not talking about the city, the, the playground. I'm talking about the fact is that we, it's serious. I lost somebody yesterday from this disease and it's very, it, it's serious. And the fact is that I feel as though, and this is my personal soapbox, we're not gonna get out of this until people really start distancing, distancing themselves from each other and really taking this serious as you don't know if you're a carrier or not, that's gonna affect somebody else. And as a city, how do we, you know, address that? That's what my, my question is to you all, you know, of what does that look like?
Here's my view on it.
The way we address it is via education, which we've been doing through the website and through the police. I mean, if, if you see a group of people aggregating, you know, and you think it's, it shouldn't happen, call the police. Let them deal with it. I mean, it's, it's not for us to enforce. I mean, we can be frustrated by it, but, you know, all we can do as a city is to educate people and enforce, you know, the laws, so.
That's it.
Yeah.
And I would like to add that complaining about it on social media is not a mechanism for resolving the situation.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Never is.
I agree.
Okay.
If I could add, as we're talking about police enforcement, I, we had a communication from a local business owner, and I'll be working with the, the police chief and Suzie in regards to letting businesses in particular, but businesses and restaurants, to make them aware that our police force is on the job 24 hours and that they will be patrolling the neighborhoods and the business strip. And to, one, as a deterrent, but also as a regular part of their responsibilities. But also, we want to remind everyone that we do have a requirement by our local ordinance that their burglar alarms are registered with the police department. So this would be a good time to make certain that you have your alarms registered and to make certain that the contact individuals on the form are current, because they often need to be updated, because, you know, people are just, you know, transitioned. So we want to remind businesses as well as property owners, homeowners, to get their alarms registered with the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing that I had was that State Representative Kyra Bowden Harris let me know that we did get $100,000 for infrastructure. She had it in their preliminary budget. So you all get really excited for that, so I can take that away from you.
Infrastructure for?
Pardon me?
Infrastructure for what?
She has secured $100,000 for Lathir Village infrastructure in the supplemental budget.
Oh, all right.
Yay! That's wonderful.
That is.
Suzie, Suzie, great job.
She's not going to do.
So, yeah, I had asked her, you know, what we, well, Cheryl and I had sent it to her or Cheryl sent it to her. But, um, so I wanted you all to be excited about it. Just only say that it was vetoed because of the coronavirus and so all money's going towards those projects. So I figured, you know, I figured we'll all be okay with that. But I just wanted to let you know that our state rep did try to make sure that we got money for our infrastructure.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Thought that counts, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. It was almost there, but, you know, pandemics, you know, unlike Cheryl, they don't come around every day. You know, we don't experience it all the time.
Well, we're getting closer. We're getting closer.
Um, I have talked to, I talked to Dave Coulter this morning, actually, about this whole zip code issue.
Oh, yeah.
And I also talked to Congresswoman Lawrence's office, which I'll give you the, the.
Reader's Digest version?
And, and the nice version of it. Basically, it's not gonna happen. So getting our own zip code and at least not, you know, and which I knew this, but the fact is that let's do our due diligence to at least run it up the flag hole. Exactly.
Do it again.
Yeah. So, um, we have talked about it. When I talked to Dave about it, his concern in the first place was even putting that dashboard out, because he kind of felt like this was going to happen, where they wanted to know what area specifically, which I explained that this was a little bit different than saying, you know, it hit in Southfield. I wanna know, was it at 12 and Evergreen? If I wanna know that. I'm like, I wanna know specifically for a, you know, for, for our city, you know, know what the difference was. But basically, that's not gonna happen either. So I tried to, to try to figure out if they knew some idea about, you know, what our, our percentages were, but, you know.
Yeah.
Nope. Something don't change, yeah.
Yep. So, well, I mean, the fact is, you know, it, nothing, what, I don't do cliches really well, so what is, nothing is better than to ask or only to fill somebody? You know what I'm trying?
And to continue to ask, because, you know, we asked a couple of years ago and then a couple of years before that. Who knows?
To keep asking.
One day we ask and it, it may, so we'll just keep asking.
Right. And then my last thing is, and I tried to call someone and obviously their voicemail didn't like my message, so it hung up on me. So I didn't need to know what's going on with the marijuana committee.
Tried to call me?
I did, and I was totally in the middle of the conversation and then she just said, goodbye. And I was like, oh, didn't like, what I'm saying? So I said, okay, forget it.
Our plan worked, Salim.
There it is. Marijuana committee, we met almost two weeks ago. We should be having our second meeting tomorrow. So I'll send out an invite for that. And we had a good meeting and we got a, you know, we had some follow-up items, which I'll follow up on tomorrow early, and then we'll be ready for our second meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night at 7:00.
Can you make sure that Cheryl stays on, it gets a part of the committee information?
Yeah, sure. I will do that.
Um, and I believe that is all that I have at, at this moment, is there's, anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I've got a bunch of things. It's been, I've, since I was gone from the, on vacation and then was quarantined, so missed two meetings, so I've got a, a bunch of things I wanna follow up on. Wanted to talk a little bit about traffic enforcement. So, you know, we had the three-month ramp up in, in patrolling Southfield Road. One thing I, I do, I think Scott's on the line, so I do have a question for Scott. Scott, are you there?
I don't know if he's able to.
He's not able to talk. He can listen to everybody, but he can't answer.
All right. Well, he can listen and he can email, email me if he has an answer. But the one thing I was trying to figure out is, the, prior to the start of the, the program, we were averaging 22 citations a week, and then it went up to 44 in the first month, on average, 42 for the second month, and then it dropped down to 23. So back to the way it was before in the third month. So I was just curious as to what happened in that third month, if for some reason we weren't continuing to enforce it. And then the other thing, I think we should talk about, you know, or we did talk about at the time that we decided to do this across the three communities, was, you know, if it worked out well, was continuing it so that we can, you know, try to develop the reputation on Southfield Road as being a, you know, strongly enforced road so that the speed tends to slow down. So I don't know what the next steps are for that, if the three communities are getting together anytime soon to, to talk about that, but maybe it's something that, that Cheryl, you can do, you know, through email or correspondence with the, the other city managers to see if whether or not we wanna continue this.
Well, I can answer in part at the present time. I, I think the message was definitely sent that there's enforcement along Southfield Road. I noticed the, the speeds decreasing myself when I was traveling each day. And part of the impact towards the last part of March in particular was that police officers in general were not making stops just because of the protections necessary in light of the virus outbreak. So if it wasn't something that was really dramatic, in general, there wasn't heavy enforcement in regards to basic ticketing.
Right. But once, once we, once, you know, once, I should say, if, because it's gonna be many months, I think anyways, before we even get to any semblance of normal, but, I mean, is this something that we can, we can continue? Or at least talk to the other cities about continuing?
Um, it's definitely worth another conversation. On what were the benefits and what were the outcomes?
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any thoughts on it? Okay. Um, wanted to follow up on, a few weeks ago, I had gotten a couple of contacts about 27315 Lathir Boulevard with some questions about code enforcement. There was, they, they got several lights on a, on a tree with, you know, rickety wiring on there. It doesn't look like it was the code. I don't even know if our code allows that. They had fence woven in, into their, I'm sorry, fabric woven in between their fence. There were partial fences on the property. There was a chain that went across the, the front porch, things like that. So wanted to find out whether or not we had made any progress in determining if any of those are violations and whether or not we're, we're doing anything if they are.
Is this the house that you said, Lathir Boulevard, and what's the corner? Is this the house that you said, Lathir Boulevard, and what's the corner?
It's, it's the anti-dog house.
It's the, it's the Hardaway House. I mean, I've, I've had several people contact me saying that the house looks like a circus. It's lit up at night like crazy. Um, you know, so, so I, I drove by there to look, you know, to verify what people were telling me. And, you know, I don't disagree with them, but, you know, the only thing that we can do, I mean, you can't, taste isn't something that we can code enforce, but if there are violations, like the light, the lighting to me looks like a clear violation. Um, you know, I, I tried to find the fence ordinance. I remember from the, the last time I looked at the fence ordinance, it states specifically what's allowed. And fabric woven in between the fence for privacy, I don't believe that's something that's allowed. I don't know for 100%. Um, but it definitely, you know, could use, uh, Kelda or Jim going over there and, you know, at least taking a look.
Uh, Jim did go over there already.
Go ahead, Scott, I'm sorry.
I said, Jim went over there and he fought, he did follow up on this, uh, sent me over a couple of photos. The problem is with the, the fence ordinance addresses the material that the fence is constructed out of. Um, the, the makeshift barrier that they put up there is not, it's not something that would be specifically excluded under our ordinance. Uh, there was a question, I think, about the, a gate across the porch that could keep out. There's nothing we can do about that. And, and the only thing that potentially could, uh, take some enforcement action on would be the light if it's directed away from the property. And, uh, that's something that they could be cited for that. Uh, it appears that they just took like a, one of those clamp lamps and wrapped an extension cord around the tree. Um, and then the other, I guess maybe one of the other bigger issues that's, I, I foresee a problem enforcing against this residence in particular because we allow for them everywhere else in the city, and that's the, the rocks and the reflectors in the right of way. Um, from the last time I was in the city and driving up and down Lathir Boulevard, I mean, every, every other resident has rocks in the right of way. It's... My sense is that they're doing that to deter, uh, people from driving or parking, uh, or the snowplow coming and tearing up, uh, the front of their yard. But, um, unless we're, unless we're to go through and enforce it against every single property, uh, that's just a nightmare waiting to happen.
Right. Slippery slope. I mean, I guess the, the complaint from the resident was that there were so many of them.
Again, I mean, we don't have, it's, we don't allow for anything in the right of way. So whether you have one or 500, uh, it's, it's a ticketable offense. And so if, but if you, if you single out one resident for enforcement, uh, you're, there, there's going to be some, some sort of backlash for that unless, again, unless it's something that, um, like we do with the trash containers, uh, or we did with the trash containers. And we go ahead and we cite everybody for those. Um, and I could tell you, the, the phone calls that I get, I'm sure Cheryl gets similar ones, uh, at City Hall, that, uh, people are very upset. Uh, why would, why would the city, uh, be wasting their time writing residents' tickets for, for having their trash cans in view? So, uh, I could, I could anticipate the, uh, the, uh, pushback on, on rocks in the right of way or anything in the right of way.
Yeah. Definitely not looking to single him out or the, the resident out. Just wanted to find out what was done because I hadn't heard back. And I wanted to make sure I'd be able to report back to the resident. Um, yeah. So did, did, did Jim look at that light? Because there were, there were, it's not just one clamp light. I think there are four of them on that three. And it's...
Yeah, I think he indicated that, uh, he could, he could write up them as being not compliant, as outdoor rated. Uh, and also that, like I referenced, our lighting ordinance doesn't allow for shining onto the neighbor's property. So he was, I think he was going to send a warning letter on that. This was, uh, um, last we talked about, I think it was two weeks ago now. I don't know if he's been in the city or if he's, what, what, I think he's actually on right now. I don't know if he could chime in. But, uh, I, I don't know if he, uh, has, uh, has sent anything out. Looks like he's raising his hand. He's raising his hand right now, so.
Did you say Jim is on right now?
Yeah, he's, he's been on the call.
Oh, he's on mute. He's on mute. So he has to unmute himself, right?
Cheryl, that's on.
Oh, Cheryl's got it.
I'm trying. It's not doing anything.
Oh.
Maybe because he wasn't an original invite.
Oh.
Now he's unmuted.
I'm, I'm unmuted. Bruce, I did, I, I did go by that house when I got, uh, notified on it. And, uh, Scott highlighted all those, the points on it. Even across the street from him, on the other side of the street, that resident has the same reflectors going around his property. But as for the, as for the lights, they're just, you know, they're exactly what Scott said. They're just workshop lights. Those little aluminum lights to buy, open bulbs with little clamps on it with the, uh, extension cords. So I am, I am gonna write him up for that. I've got a little bit of relationship with him. Uh, him and I have worked before with, he's had some inoperative vehicles in his driveway and alongside. And, uh, we, we have a, really, we have a pretty good relationship to him. I was gonna stop at his house one day and go up and talk to him, but there was a lot of work going on next door that he was really concerned with. And so I didn't want to pull the tail of the tiger, so to speak, at that particular time. But I am gonna send him a notice for the lights. And, uh, I'm actually gonna hand deliver it to him and talk to him and ask him if he can take those down for his own safety because it could cause a fire.
Good. Perfect. Alright. Well, that gives me what I need to know to respond to the residence. Um...
Just a quick question, just a quick question on that, uh, Jim. So it's clear to me that across the street, there's a knee-jerk issue going on. So that the neighbor across the street put up a partial fence or a partial barrier. And apparently, it may be due to the person that we're talking about. So, I don't know what's going on there, but what's the ordinance to put up, putting up a partial fence? So they just put up one straight-line fence?
He, uh, he actually applied for a permit for that fence and it meets the requirement of the ordinance as far as that fence being there. Uh, it met all the requirements for it. He got the ordinance, he got the permit, he got his inspections, and it was approved.
Okay. Alright, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Alright. Do we have any, um, uh, Cheryl, was there any, uh, follow-up or any work done with Ann Runyon's issue, uh, with the, the weed field over on Saratoga and Rackham with the gurgling water and the, has anything been done with that in the last five or six weeks?
Nothing since that, our last conversation, though.
Is, is there, is there a plan for, I, I think, I think the last time we talked, there was a plan for DPS to get with the resident? Is any, is anything happening with that? Or is, I just want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to move forward as, as much as we can?
DPS did meet with them. Um, they're doing the, I guess, survey to try to identify where the water is, not only in that location, but citywide. So I haven't heard the report back relative on trying to identify the source of the water.
Okay. Alright, we'll just...
Okay.
Okay, um, what's that?
That's okay. I'm good.
Alright, um, Saleem, I wanted to check with you. Back in September, we assigned to you the, um, investigating, you know, the recycling program with Rochester Hills. Has anything happened with that?
No, not yet. I haven't been able to do anything with that yet. So, I'll put it on my list to follow up.
Okay.
Back on my list.
Um, and I guess to piggyback on, on what, on Scott's comments, uh, just a second ago, um, one of the things that we said that we were gonna do, uh, it was about six to eight weeks ago, was, I think it was via an R-Town or a, um, basically just let, um, residents know that we're hiring a code enforcement officer and, and, you know, uh, actually residents and businesses. I think we had talked about putting it in the next R-Town. Um, have we done anything with that?
Not yet.
Alright, still, still on the plan, in the plans, though, I assume, especially now that we're, we're closer to hiring somebody?
Correct.
Um, alright. And then, um, we also were talking about sending out letters to the, uh, five or six building owners with, um, with respect to parking blocks. Has that gone out?
No, it hasn't. Um, we sat down with Jill in particular and Suzie, and we were going over how we wanted to approach that. And the conversation then shifted because, and Suzie, you can pipe in if you'd like to, because there were some issues in regards to where they are set in the, I guess, going into the, the county's right-of-way on the street. And it made more sense to start looking more towards having the, um, the side street parking made available.
Yeah, some of those, um, some of those areas where there's the, the slip parking, I mean, it, it's a bit of a can of worms, right? Like if you put the bumper blocks there, then it, it, in a lot of cases, it has the effect of shortening that parking stall, right? And making, and then pushing the cars out into the drive aisle. So that part makes it a little unsafe. Um, and, and it kind of gives them a little bit more, I mean, I personally feel it gives them a little bit more of that ownership issue that we don't really want to encourage, um, knowing that we're gonna be reconstructing Southfield Road as it is. So, um, Jill and I, yeah, we've been, we continue to talk about this idea we've come up with. I mean, do we, um, do we change the orientation of the parking so it's parallel instead of, um, you know, perpendicular to the sidewalk? Will that help? Um, and, I mean, really, I think, and that's one of the things that's gonna be on the DDA's, uh, capital improvement program, plan pages, is, uh, starting to install those side street parking lots. Because I think it ultimately is preferable to just see, see, see us move away from parking in the front right-of-way.
Alright, so is that something we have on our agenda for the 21st? Or, because I mean, I guess I don't understand how it shortens the, well, I guess two different separate thoughts. But, uh, I don't understand quite how that shortens the parking space and moves cars into the, into the, the, the drive area.
Because, uh, well, for that particular question, so if you imagine all those angled spots, you know, I mean, you're not, you have to put some sort of wheel stop before, you know, before that sidewalk. It, there's typically like a few inches of cushion there, right? So if you're having, if you're putting people, you know, pushing that bumper block, say, four to five inches out from that sidewalk, I mean, if they're non-conforming lengths to begin with, it's just gonna push those bigger cars out. Um, we are gonna be talking about parking solutions, bringing up the idea of parking districts again, um, on April 21st, uh, to start, to start that discussion. So, kind of cheap answer.
Okay. Um, well, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, let, I guess, talk about it there. I mean, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't see that logic. I honestly, I don't see that logic. But that's something we can talk about with Jill at the, the planning commission. Um, because, you know, ha, you know, some of the, some of the parking lots that don't have them, half the lot has them and half the lot doesn't have them. So it makes no sense, that argument doesn't really make sense if, if, if the parking lot is already undergoing that, that, it already has locks. Right?
Yeah, but, I mean, not, at the, you know, and I'm going based on like remembering what the, the pictures were that you sent before, and they didn't have them, right? I mean, that was the big, that was the big problem. So...
Some, some of the properties don't have them, yeah.
I, you know, and then, but, and I think, uh, you know, Scott Baker's brought it up before, at least in a chain of emails, is, you know, I mean, how do you begin to start enforcing this as well, right? Like, some of them have wheel stops, some of them don't. Like, how do you, you know, how do you kind of make that distinction?
Well, the last, the last council meeting that I was at, we talked about enforcing that through, A, um, sending, sending, um, the building owners, uh, a, a letter because some of them may be willing to address, may be willing to address that issue on their own by putting the, the locks in. And B, by, by enforcing it by, you know, ticketing cars that are hanging over the sidewalk. I mean, if, you know, it was, perfect example was the, Cheryl, what's, what's the business? Um, I'm blanking on it. The chiropractor dentist building. Uh, Odell?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, I, I, I was walking the dog one day. There were three cars that were completely over the, over the sidewalk and they, they got ticketed. And Odell immediately put up a sign telling people, and they still have the sign up now, telling people, um, you know, not to park over the sidewalk. Well, if, if that happened, and Odell, I know Odell came in and was yelling at Cheryl, and maybe not yelling at Cheryl, but, you know, discussing it with Cheryl. Um, you know, if, if we enforce the fact that cars shouldn't be on the sidewalks, then building owners, you know, it's gonna be in their own best interest to take care of the issue. I mean, we can't force them because they're legally non-conforming.
Well, I mean...
And that's what we talked about six weeks ago, was, was increasing enforcement. And I don't know if it's been done. I know there's tickets in that one situation, but...
That's a good point.
I mean, that's what we agreed on doing.
Well, I mean, there's two different ways, it's two different avenues of enforcement, right? I mean, you're ticketing either, you either ticket the, the, the person with the vehicle or you ticket the, the business owner. So somebody, you know, I mean, it's just...
I don't know how you can...
It's just two different ways of approaching. I, I, I think that really, but we, I think looking at it from a bigger picture perspective, though, you, you have, we have to get people to move away from parking in the Southfield adjacent right-of-way anyways. I, you know, I mean, there, that's, that's just all there is to it. So, um, I, I think that we should just be encouraged, trying, trying to do what we can to encourage them to move away from that anyways. So...
So we can definitely have a more detailed discussion at the, um, planning commission meeting because the conversation I was having, especially with the planner, was we're, we're essentially going to be asking the businesses to put in the pocket, parking blocks when essentially we're going to be turning around and telling them they can't have parking out front.
Right, I get it. Alright, well, let's, let's, let's talk about that on the 21st. And not, not take up more time here. Um, Scott, anything going on with the sign ordinance? Is that still moving forward?
I haven't talked to Jill. I mean, the last, I can't remember, that was, uh, January, maybe. Does, she, she was looking into it, but I haven't gotten any feedback from her and I haven't seen or talked to her. Because we haven't had a planning commission meeting since December, January.
Right. Exactly, exactly.
January, January.
Oh. Alright, that's all I have.
Uh, this is just a follow-up to, uh, no parking sign on, uh, San Rosa. What's the schedule to put that no parking sign in? Cheryl?
I, I can check with DPS. I know they have said on the, the ground on Saws. So I can check with DPS on the schedule.
Okay. I think, uh, are we doing those two streets? I think it's San Rosa and Avila, right? Because Roseland's done right now.
I thought it was both streets.
Oh, well, yeah. I mean, you know, it's, when they get the schedule going, obviously all side streets, yes.
Okay.
We're getting heavy traffic on San Rosa and Avila. That's why I'm pointing those two out.
Traffic or parking?
Parking.
Okay.
Parking on the grass, although we haven't seen it lately because of the shelter in place. Okay, thanks.
Is there anything from anyone else?
I just wanted to, um, let the council know that the yard waste, um, with Tringali did begin today. So those will be Monday pickup. And the, um, branch tipping will begin this Friday and every Friday. Also, um, Suzie and I will have a meeting for what they're calling District 10, where the county is offering some, um, revitalization resources for small businesses. And they had an opportunity to apply for a grant or loan. The deadline was today at 12 noon. So, uh, we'll be a part of that process, um, for moving forward those applications. And that meeting, um, will be on Wednesday.
Thank you.
And before we go, um, Councilmember Siddiqui, there is an officer who is the point person relative to marijuana issue. If he could be invited to the meeting tomorrow as well, I'll send you his, um, contact information.
Yeah, that'd be great. Just email me his info. Send him an invite.
Okay.
You're scheduling this thing at seven tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Um, yeah, if you can send me that information, um, also, um, Saleem, is there any public comments?
Are their mics open?
They can indicate by raising their hand first.
I see John Jackson on there and a couple others. I see John Jackson on there, and a couple others.
Nope, I only see one person, you see someone else?
Oh, that's uh, says Jim Nelson.
Do you know who Jim Nelson is?
He's an official. That's the building official.
Uh-huh.
Oh, there's two Jims on here, Jim Nelson and Jim Wright.
And Jim Wright, yeah.
Jim Nelson does the, does the, um...
Oh, Jim Nelson. Jim Nelson's the table guy.
Right.
Got you, okay. Hey, Jim.
Okay, hearing none from public comments, then I will adjourn the meeting then. You all have a good evening, and we'll talk again, um, God willing, on the twentieth.
Thanks, everyone.
Goodnight, everybody.
Thank you.
Be well.
See you later, Cheryl.
Bye-bye.